Going to do it over Zoom, huh?
Yes. All right, we are live.
So official.
Very. Good evening, everybody. We're going to start off tonight by doing the of office for our two counselors who were re-elected to their position. Ben McDonald and Chris Mullen. If you would both raise your right hand and repeat after me. I. State your name.
Chris Mullen.
Same time.
Yeah. Swear to support and uphold the Constitution.
Swear to uphold.
Uphold the Constitution.
Constitution.
And laws of the United States of America.
And laws of the United States of America.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
State and city charter.
State and city charter.
And general ordinances.
And general ordinances.
Of the city of Staton.
Of the city of Staton.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city counselor.
Of city counselor.
For the city of Staton.
For the city of Staton.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, that's it. Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations and welcome again and still wonderful. Okay. Let's see, we're ready. It's seven o'clock and probably a little after. I don't have my Timex with me. But we're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Boom boom and ask Alyssa if there's any public comment that needs to be entered.
No, we did not receive any requests or written public comments this evening, Mayor.
I should go through and ask. Let's see, the council is here except for Counselor Hook.
Nope, she just hopped on and right when you started the meeting.
Okay, she's here. And so the counselors are here, new ones are sworn in. Who's here for staff tonight? Alyssa?
We've got everyone here. We've got the city manager Keith Campbell, Chief of Police David Friesendahl, myself, and Jana Moser, Library Director, Susannah Sabracha, our Finance Director, Lance Ledwick, our Public Works Director, and Dan Fleishman, our Director of Planning and Development.
Very good. She's got all those names memorized. That's.
It's like a test every time.
I'm impressed. Sometimes can't do that. I'm sorry. Okay, tonight then, as we get going, our consent agenda for December 21st, the City Council minutes. And would anyone like to look at those?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, there she is.
Yeah, hi. I wanted to note that it says that I was excused for the last meeting, but I was present for that meeting.
Thank you. I will.
Well, we'd like to see you here, so that's wonderful. Yes. Okay, that consent agenda, would someone like to offer some action on it, please? And there's a couple of items on it. And one is, well, the council minutes and then liquor license, Oregon Liquor Control Commission license, full-on premises commercial for Hugo's Pizza. And I hope everyone has a chance to look at that. Go ahead.
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
And a motion in a second to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, don't we have to include the revision that?
With the revision, thank you, sorry.
Okay. Someone.
My apologies, Paige.
Okay, with revisions. Yeah, that should take care of it. Alyssa, would you like to poll the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort? Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. The next thing is a public hearing on a zone map amendment at 977 West Ida Street. And I have to read a thing, so sit back and relax for a minute as I drag us through this. And this is a a zone map amendment, again, 977 West Ida Street. And I have to read this. Good evening, my name is Henry Porter. I'm the mayor of the city of Staton. And I'll be presiding over this meeting. This is the time and place set for the city council's public hearing in the matter of land use file number eight dash zero nine slash twenty, an application for an official zoning map amendment. The application requests that the property at 977 West Ida Street be changed from low-density residential to medium-density residential. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement to be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. Zone map amendment applications are required to satisfy approval criteria contained within the state municipal code number seventeen dot twelve dot one eight zero point six. I guess it's seventeen point twelve. Anyway. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward these approval criteria or to other such rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe to apply to this case. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to the planning staff. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba, which is the Land Use Board of Appeals, shall be raised no later than the close of the record at or following the final evidentiary hearing in this case. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity so as to afford this body and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application involved here. Continuances may take the form of holding an additional public hearing with oral testimony allowed, or may consist of holding the evidentiary record open for a period of time designated by the city, for submittal from the public of written evidence. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. And I hear none. Let's see, unwrap this, excuse me a second. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. And I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of the council? I hear none. If you are providing testimony during a public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. As was noted in the opening statement, this is a public hearing on an application for a zone map amendment. Before we go any further, I want to point out that the city council's rules for land use public hearings states that if an applicant is not present at the hearing, that the hearing will be continued. At eleven thirty this morning, I received an email from the applicant stating that the co-applicant, his wife, went into labor this morning. So they didn't think they'd be able to make it. So I leave it to you to decide whether these special circumstances warrant deviating from the council rules and continuing with the hearing, or whether you want to postpone this hearing until your next meeting on January nineteenth.
I would like to just step in and affirm what Mr. Fleishman said. The applicant is actually the president or the chairman of the Parks Board, and I received that exact email this morning letting you know that. So I just wanted to step in and say that. Thank you.
And Dan, I think one other piece of information we want to share is the applicant asked us to go forward.
Yes, the applicant said they were fine. And also at the planning commission hearing, they really did not have much to say. I hesitate to be in the position of appearing to be staff presenting the application without the applicant being present. But again, I think in this case, you know, things just happen that can't be scheduled. So I guess I'd be looking.
Need a motion on that, or just what do we need to do?
I think you need to make a motion either to continue the hearing until January nineteen or to proceed with the hearing this evening.
Mr. Mayor? Oh, go ahead, David. No, David, you go.
Counselor?
No problem. This is Counselor Patty. I just was going to say that I would motion that we would move forward with the hearing with the applicant absent.
All right.
I will second.
Okay, motion in a second to move forward with this application for a zone map amendment on 977 West Ida. Oh, let's see, we can't do voice votes anymore, so Alyssa, would you poll the council on this, please? Unless there's discussion. No, go ahead.
Sure. Counselor Ort? Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
A motion passes five to zero.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead with this. Then the next thing, a staff report.
Yeah, so I'll just go right into the staff report. To repeat myself, what you've got before you is an application for a zone map amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential for one parcel that's about an eight thousand square foot parcel that was established not quite ten years ago, 2011, by partitioning. The original parcel was a little bit more than twice that size, and the other parcel in the partitioning has a four-unit apartment building on it that is a legally existing non-conforming use in the low-density residential zone. The applicant purchased the property about a year ago, I believe, and have submitted this application to rezone the property to medium density with the intent to build a duplex on this back lot. You've got in your packet the staff's summary and analysis, the required findings for each of the criteria for a zone map amendment. You've got, there was no public participation at the planning commission's public hearing. We've received no written communication from anybody after the several notices of the application. I guess in summary, I will point out, as I have done before you on a number of occasions, that our adopted comprehensive plan and housing needs analysis points out the need for additional multifamily, including duplex and triplex, that in the seven years since the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the number of duplexes, triplexes, and multifamily units has not met what would be projected in the housing needs analysis. And rezoning this to medium density will provide the opportunity for an additional duplex unit to be built. There are adequate utilities available, although I will note that the conditions of approval from back in 2009, when the partitioning was approved by the planning commission, did require that an onsite sprinkler system be installed in the new building on this back parcel or a fire hydrant be connected out on West Ida Street. And the applicant submitted the required transportation planning rule analysis that indicated that the potential worst-case scenario from rezoning this property to medium density would not have an adverse impact on the city's transportation system. That was reviewed by the city's transportation planning consultant who concurred with both the methodology and conclusion. The planning commission, following their public hearing, has recommended to you that you approve this application and staff does as well. You've got ordinance 1046 in your packet with the appropriate findings and conclusion to support approval. So following any other testimony, there's nobody else here on the Zoom call, but if there is any other testimony, your options are to approve the ordinance as presented, to approve it with modifications, or to request staff come back with different findings and conclusions to support a denial of the application. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. And then we can go through asking for additional testimony.
Are there questions from the council for Mr. Fleishman? Okay, Dan, thank you for now, then. Anyone in favor of this?
Yes. More housing good.
Counselor McDonald?
That's all, more housing good. Approved, please.
Okay. Other persons in favor?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have a question. Dan, so is the road that goes down to this strip, is that going to be sufficient to have the traffic go down for two two more units back there?
Good question.
Yes, it's essentially a shared driveway. The partitioning established a an easement area for access to this back parcel. And
Is there a maintenance agreement on it?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Is there a maintenance, a road maintenance agreement?
Yes, that was part of the planning commission's approval.
Awesome. And then you mentioned about the sprinkler and/or the fire hydrant. Did they? I didn't see if they indicated, I'm sorry, which one they were going to do.
The the partitioner back in 2010 or 11 said that the building on the back lot will be sprinkled. He chose not to install a hydrant.
Thank you.
Essentially push those costs on to somebody else.
All right. Thank you, counsel. Good questions. Somebody else, or anyone else? Yeah, the parking on, is this a? I've forgotten, Dan, is this a flag lot?
It is not a flag lot. It is a back lot.
A back lot.
Served by an easement across the other parcel for access to West Ida Street.
Okay. Well, the traffic on yeah, traffic should always be a concern. A duplex will have four, maybe six cars, and it's got to be a place to park them. Okay, other questions from the council? Persons in favor? Persons opposed? Other interested persons? Questions from the public? Questions from the council? And since we don't have an applicant for a summary here, Dan, can you give us a staff summary on this, if there is any?
Yeah, well, I really don't have anything else to add. You've got the ordinance in front of you, and your options are to enact it as presented, or enact it with modifications, or to, again, to request staff come back with findings and conclusions to support a denial.
Okay, all right. Okay, at this point, then, I'm going to close the hearing and go to council deliberation. So the hearing's closed. And council deliberation on ordinance number 1046. Go ahead, folks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, this is Counselor Hook. I just think that the planning commission did a really thorough job bringing facts to us, and of course, Dan, with his paperwork that he put forward in the packet as well. And it seems like it's a pretty easy decision for me based on what was presented this evening and in the packet.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Yes, Ms. Hook.
I was just going to say, you know, the report was great. It was easy to follow and appreciate staff for their time doing that. In addition, I didn't realize the applicant, you know, was dealing with some stuff, and it sounds like they're probably pretty busy, so I just wanted to say I really appreciated their ownness of the application as well. That was pretty helpful for me.
Little bit of an understatement that they might be busy at this time, but that's fine. Thank you, David. Could we get a decision then on what to do with with ordinance number 1046, which is a partition of our zone map amendment for a minor partition at 977 West Ida Street?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor, again, there's no more deliberation. I'd like to motion that we approve the application of Andrew and Lily Westland and as ordinance 1046 is presented.
Okay. A motion and a second to approve the application and the first consideration of ordinance 1046. If this is a unanimous decision on the part of the council, it will be will be brought before the council for a second consideration at January nineteenth meeting. Wait a minute, it's, no, if it's unanimous, the ordinance is enacted and will be presented to myself for signature and approval. So is there any other? Any other concerns at this point, or can we go to a vote? I guess we're going to a vote. I don't mean to just rush ahead on this, but there's more to do tonight. So Alyssa, I've got a motion and a second to approve that first, approve the application and first consideration of ordinance 1046. Would you poll the council, please?
Sure. Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. And there's a little Alyssa's going to be convinced that I'm not going to remember this. But I'm surprised her. And remember. The council's action may be appealed within 21 days of the mailing of the notice of decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals under the provisions of the Oregon Revised Statute 197.805-855. Okay, so got that one. Okay, the next thing, I'm going to get up here a little closer. The next thing is ordinance number 1047, adopting the 2021 wastewater facilities planning study and comprehensive plan amendments. And another one of these things I have to read as we get started. Okay. Let's see. Let's see, yeah, here it is. Okay, again. Let me get up here. Good evening, my name's Henry Porter. I'm the mayor of Staton, and will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number nine dash ten slash twenty, concluding legislative actions, adopting an updated wastewater facilities planning study and amended portions of the comprehensive plan. The hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement to be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. Amendments to the comprehensive plan are required to satisfy approval criteria contained within the state municipal code number seventeen point twelve point one seven zero point six. The adoption of a public facility plan must comply with Oregon Administrative Rule Chapter 66, Division 11. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward these approval criteria or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe apply to this case. If you have documents, maps, or letters which you wish to have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to the city staff. An issue which may be the basis for an appeal to Luba, again, the Land Use Board of Appeals, shall be raised not later than the close of the record or following the final evidentiary hearing on this case. Such issues shall be raised with sufficient specificity. I did that right the first time. Specificity so as to afford this body and the parties to this hearing an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the proceedings involved here. Continuances may take the form of holding an additional public hearing with oral testimony allowed, or may consist of holding the evidentiary record open for a period of time designated by the city for submittal from the public of written evidence. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, or bias, or any members of the council? I hear none. If you are providing testimony during the public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman? Is that you, or is that someone from? Is it Keller Associates? Somebody jump in here.
You're muted, Dan.
My computer just told me I was muted.
Ah, thank you, Mr. Fleishman.
So I will start off, and then I will hand it over to our friends from Keller and Associates.
Okay, thank you.
So what you have before you this evening is a public hearing on that is technically an amendment of our comprehensive plan. The wastewater facilities planning study is an appendix to the plan. And also before you are some relatively minor updates to the text of the comprehensive plan's chapter on public facilities and services. There are no proposed changes to the goals, policies, or actions associated with public facilities and services as part of this proposal. You may recall, actually, I'm having a hard time recalling whether it was late October or early November that you had a presentation from Keller. Just to bring you up to speed on the proposed wastewater facilities planning study. Since that time, it's been submitted to the Department of Environmental Quality for review. Notice was provided to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development. We've received, as far as I know, we've received no written comments from any state. We've received, as far as I know, we've received no written comments from any state or local agencies. We've received no public comment from the public. The Planning Commission held their public hearing at the end of November and there was nobody in attendance at that hearing and no comment submitted. So with that, I will turn it over to Peter Olson and Emily Flock with Keller and Associates to tell you all the things that I don't know about or don't understand about the details of the facilities planning study.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Hi, Dan. Mr. Mayor and Council, you know, glad to be here and to discuss the wastewater facilities planning study or wastewater master plan with you this evening. Dan, just to, just to check, you know, we have the, the presentation that we had done previously and what I, what we had intended to do is just kind of cover any adjustments and changes since the last presentation we had talked about, you know, and comments that we may have received, may have received from the DEQ, which were minor in, in effect, very, nothing very substantive there at all. That was my intent, Dan. I just wanted to double check, make sure that was the, that's what you were anticipating in this.
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, since our last presentation, we, we did a lot of wrapping up, small modifications, discussions with staff, all the things that Dan has shared with you already are, one of our main steps in the process is to submit it to the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality. Tim McFetridge with the Oregon DEQ reviewed the document as well as another person, I can't remember her name, she's in charge of the funding and environmental side of things for DEQ as it pertains to these. We did receive written comments from both and we have addressed those comments. We have a response letter that we've prepared and ready to send to the DEQ. As I mentioned, none of their comments were very substantive, just clarifications. There was, you know, two or three typos type of deal. And so we have made those modifications. And Emily, do you want to kind of summarize just a couple of those questions and comments that they had?
Yeah, so most of them, there were a couple of questions on some recommendations, just clarifying sort of like the bio solids class and just clearly stating a couple of pieces on the recommended F or influent equalization pond and just how it, how it would operate. And so we had a quick conversation with Tim McFetridge on that and just added a paragraph on some of those operations. And like Peter said, there's really nothing other substantive comments or changes that have been made.
I'd just like to affirm that. I've been working with Keller on this throughout and I reviewed DEQ's comments, very minor in nature, I was quite surprised. It just, and it just, it just reinforced my opinion and what a good job Keller had done because DEQ usually takes their time and looks through these master plan documents and they found very little. So I'm very happy with that, very happy with Keller's work and I feel very confident going through with that document.
And with, with our previous presentation that we had provided as well as, you know, this supplemental information, you know, supplemental items that we're discussing here, I guess is this the time, it is a public hearing, so I don't know whether it's our, you know, our responsibility to ask if there's any questions or anything at this point, specific items that the mayor or council you would, you'd like to ask. Really, that's, we wanted to be available, be ready to, you know, we have documents, the figures, things that we can look at if there's any specific questions for the, the plan.
Thank you. At this point, oh, let's see, there's questions from the council. This is that time. I'm going through the script that I have. Let me ask one, did you folks write the original master plan for our wastewater system?
We, we did back, I wouldn't say original, it, it does go through iterations every so often, but the 2006, I think, was the, the year of the previous one that, and yes, we were the, the firm that had done it at that time.
Did, we expanded the plant, I think, in 10 or 11?
Correct.
Big update, then, like $11 million in improvements and upgrades. Did you folks review that at that time?
We were the ones that did the design of that, those upgrades.
Okay, okay. And that's been pretty satisfactory since, so that's kind of a stamp of approval on your work, so that's good.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty nice. I think Peter, you can, Peter and Emily, you can reinforce, but I think the plant was designed, what, for 2.7 million gallons? We had peaks over the last couple of weeks of up to 6 million gallons, so it's really performing well and I think that is a lot to say about our operators down at the plant and Troy running the plant. So I just wanted to put that there. It's, it's, it's running very efficient.
Okay, Lance, do that again for me, would you please? The thing was designed for 2.7 and has been processing six, did I hear that right?
We had a couple of days in the last two weeks that we were upwards of 6 million gallons per day, yeah. And again, I think that, I think we've talked about this in the previous documents that Keller's provided, a lot of that is through, from I and I, from our sanitary sewer system. But yeah, we were upwards of 6 million gallons. I think last week we were at four and a half million. And so, yeah, it's running well. We haven't had any problems. Knock on wood.
I, I would just echo what you're saying, Lance. I think the, the city has a great group of operators. They, they do a great job at the, at the plant and, and when you do have an opportunity as the mayor and council to, to voice your appreciation and, and share that with them, I think that's well deserved by, by your staff.
Well, let me do, let me do one more here and I don't want to get mired down in this. A major, not an accident, but a major problem with this, let me call it an overflow, would be untreated sewage going into the river, am I correct there? Like Portland does all the time? Or did?
Yeah, Salem had one last month.
Okay, same thing. It's that, that idea of the, the system is just overwhelmed and, yeah, okay. And we haven't, we haven't seen that.
Nope.
Good. Let's leave that one, we go on. Other questions from the council, please? Okay, how about persons in favor of this?
Mayor, this is Alyssa. We did not receive any comments this evening in favor.
Or opposed?
Or opposed and, and other interested persons. No one requested to speak either tonight.
Okay. And so the council has weighed in on this. Are there other questions from the council? At this point? Oh, let's, let's go to a staff summary on this thing, then whoever, Lance or Mr. Olson or Dan's, one of you experts.
I will, Mr. Fleishman prepared the staff report, so I will defer to him unless Peter wants to read his prepared summary.
All right.
All right, so again, what you've got before you is a draft ordinance that will adopt this updated master plan or facilities planning study and make some relatively minor changes to the text in chapter one of the comprehensive plan, just noting that we've got a 2021 version and striking out the 2006 version. And in chapter five, in the description of the city sanitary sewer system, just updating that short four paragraph description to, to bring it up to date and to, to reflect the, the new study. You've got the ordinance before you. Your choices are to adopt it as presented, to adopt it as, with modifications, or to continue the hearing or continue your deliberations until your next meeting.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Let's go ahead and close the hearing then and ask for counsel deliberation on what to do with ordinance number 1047, adopting the 2021 wastewater facilities planning study and comprehensive plan amendments. Folks? For under counsel deliberation on this, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor Hook.
I, Counselor Hook here. I just wanted to kind of echo what I had said before. It was in a prior hearing, really great information. I watched the presentation given prior. I feel like I have all the information needed to make a really good thoughtful decision. So thank you to everyone that provided all that information for us.
Someone else?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counsel Patty. I just wanted to say thank you for the report, it's great. Also, thank you to city staff for making sure that 6 million gallons of wastewater doesn't go into the river. Really appreciate that. You guys do a great job to Lance and your staff, thank you so much.
You know, one of the, one of the parts that gets overlooked in these things sometimes is the fact that, and we have it here, the, the people that prepared this aren't sidestepping and saying, well, but if this and this and this, they seem happy with what they've constructed here. And they've got a reputation to uphold and so they're going to tell it the way it is and not create some, what? Some phony scenario that comes back and bites everyone, including themselves, later on. So I really appreciate that. Someone else? Are you ready, you folks ready for a decision then on the ordinance 1047? Somebody, Mr. Patty, jump in there if you're ready.
Well, I saw that Chris didn't have his mute on, so I thought maybe.
No, I got, I, I'm off, I'm ready to go. Mr. Mayor, to your point, I would just say that, that the amount of data, as Counselor Hook was saying, the specificity of this report is incredible and if you're a data person like I am, it's just amazing to get this level of, of detail on a report like this. So I would move to approve ordinance number 1047 as presented.
Seconded.
A motion and a second then to approve ordinance 1047 as presented. And so is there, is there any, any other discussion or thought on that? And if not, let's go to a decision. Alyssa, would you poll the council on this, please?
Sure. Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Alyssa.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move forward, I just want to, since we're concluding the master plan, I want to thank everybody involved and that really starts with the city council. We met two years ago, we talked about updating our master plans. This was phase one. We, we performed the transportation plan two years ago. This was actually the first one since this new council has arrived. So it's in no small part that you guys, you guys have forced this and you want to get it done. So I want to thank you guys for that. I want to thank Keller for doing the, the work, very professional along the way. And I'd like to thank our citizen advisory committee and our technical advisory committee. They've been great throughout this process and I just wanted to say that since this will be the last time we'll be discussing this.
Okay, I need to put a closing statement in here now, needing to get the last.
Sorry about that.
I don't need to get the last word all the time, but once in a while. The council's action may be appealed within 21 days of the mailing of the notice of decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals under the Oregon Revised Statute 197.805 through 855. Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Olson and, and the other, the other Keller folks that were here tonight. Okay, let's see, what else? We have to, we have to pick, I think we have to pick the council president at some point, like right now. Alyssa, would you take us through that, please?
I sure will. Well, good evening, mayor and council. It is that time of year again to select your council president for the year. So it, it's set per charter and we can take nominations if you have a, someone in mind.
Alyssa, let me interrupt, I'm sorry. A two-year, a two-year appointment, isn't it?
No, it's just, it's a year.
I thought we did it every two. Oh, well, we can do it every one.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's fine.
I, I would, I don't know if this person will want to take that on, but I would like to nominate Counselor Ort for that position.
Counselor Ort's been nominated.
Seconded.
Somebody, say, a second.
Renominate Counselor Mullen, he did a great job. He's got his head.
Are there any other nominations?
I would second the renomination of Counselor Mullen.
Okay, so Counselor Ort and Counselor Mullen have been nominated. Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I would, I would like to say I appreciate your vote of confidence, too.
Would either of, either of you like to make a long-winded and exciting and emotional acceptance speeches?
Just say that.
We're a bunch of shy folks. Am I the only shy in this outfit? Go ahead, Chris. Counselor?
No, it's, it, it really is just an opportunity to serve, you know, when there are challenges and issues. And, and I, you know, I, I hope that I've been able to serve in that for you folks. I don't know that we always use that opportunity as much as we should and, and, and that's something I'd like to see that we do more often since it does serve as a liaison to like the attorney and stuff like that. So I just, I appreciate the nomination.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ort? A, no more than 20-minute speech, if that's possible. The evening is young, but go ahead if you have, would you like to say anything?
Well, if you insist on stifling my speech, I did have one prepared, but I'm going to have to quit.
Thank you, that was fun. That was, I was being light about that. Who expects anyone to be, make a stump speech? I can't even do that. Okay.
Oh, you didn't let me talk.
What's that?
You let me talk.
Oh, yeah, no, that's a, a well-established, no, I, that's all right. And this, on this, I guess, Alyssa, we haven't had to do this before, what, we've got two?
It's been a while. So we can, if someone wants to make, I mean, really, it's going to come down to making a motion for one of the nominated parties and, and voting on it or hashing it out amongst yourselves, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, yes, go ahead.
I would like to move to elect Counselor Ort as council president.
Seconded.
Okay, we've got a motion there and David, did you second that? And David, did you second that?
I did.
Counsel Patty, okay. Now, what do we do with the other nominee? What do we do there?
Well, does Counselor Ort want the job? Is the question, I guess.
Okay, here's one. Under discussion.
I think it counts as a discussion at this point.
We're in discussion, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor? This is Counselor Hook. I would just like to say that I have appreciated Counselor Mullen's duty as council president. I do think that Counselor Ort is, has been a very involved council member, and that's not to say that anyone else has not been. But I always appreciate how, how much she comes to the meetings fully prepared, with a lot to say on, on some of the things that a lot of us have questions on, that maybe we didn't realize we had questions on. I think that she's a strong leader, and I would just really find it to be an honor to have her serving as our council president, and that liaison between the attorney and us.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor. Yeah, I just wanted to go ahead and say, you know, echo everything that Counselor Hook just said. The only thing I will say is, you know, Counselor Mullen has been great throughout this whole thing. But the only thing that I'd like to see council president become is an opportunity for each of us to kind of learn these roles, and learn how to best serve the citizens of Staten in these different roles, to maybe take something back once you sit, you know, step down from council president to the bench of just a regular council member, and be able to remember, okay, this is what it looked like from my viewpoint as council president, and be able to understand that point of view. And I think that just being able to kind of, you know, grow this role around every year, since we have the option to, might be really helpful. So, that's the reason for my vote tonight, and I just wanted to share that. I didn't want Counselor Mullen to think that there's any reason why I would choose her over you. I think you guys were both, I think that Counselor Ort will do a great job. I think that Counselor Mullen did a great job. But I just see this as an opportunity for us to get a diversity of experience in our elected official roles.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, as long as Counselor Ort is open to it, I have, I have no objections. I'm sure she would do a good job. I, no, I don't want to foist it on her if she doesn't want it. I'm on board if everybody else is. I don't, I don't have any objections.
Well, if, if we were at the table, I'd have Alyssa pass around a piece of paper, and you put one person's name or the other on it with a Zoom thing. This is another one of these new and not necessarily wonderful experiences, but we'll do it. And we'll, we'll get a good, a good result and a good outcome. It's just a little bit awkward here and there. So, how do, how do we choose between these two?
Well, they're, they did make a motion, so we can move forward.
Mr. Mayor, Counselor McDonald asked two times if I would be willing to take on the position. And I, again, I appreciate your vote of confidence, and I like what Counselor Patty said in, in taking on the role and having that experience. And I think I feel comfortable stepping into that role, having had the experience of being on the council under our belt thus far. So, I would be honored to serve as president if that's what you'd like.
Okay, thank you. No, it's, there's not a lot of work involved, but it's, yeah, it's a good thing to be part of. Do that. Good little job. And the old guy, he, he isn't here always to do things. So, yeah. We all, you all should be able to adopt leadership roles in this thing. It's part of what it's about. So, Alyssa, back to you. Ball's in your court again. What do we do? How do we vote on this?
We'll just vote like we normally would on a motion.
Okay, then a motion is, a motion and a second, to appoint Counselor Jordan Ort as council president for the 1921, 2021. Thank you. Missed it by 100 years. The 2021 council year. Would you poll the council?
Sure.
So, this is just a straight up-down, right? Yes or no?
Yep.
Okay.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort?
You vote for yourself, that's weird. Sure, yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Uh, sure, yes.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero.
Okay. Congratulations and, and our new council president for the 2021 council year. Thank you, Jordan, for being willing to do this. Okay. Almost last but not least, Oregon Water Resources Department Water Project Feasibility Study, project contract award. Mr. Ludwig?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Before you unite is the issue of whether or not the council should award a contract to Keller Associates for consulting services to perform the feasibility study to determine if an aquifer storage and recovery system can be developed for use as our secondary water source here in Staten. I know we brought, I brought this before you a few times now. I don't necessarily think I need to go into the background information much, other than to say that we have put out an RFP in September, or I came to the council in September to see if we wanted to go out with an RFP under the, due to the COVID-19 pandemic and resources, available resources to do this. The council voted 5-0 to move forward. I put out a RFP for the Aquifer Storage and Recovery System project in October. We received one proposal back. That was from Keller Associates. We had a two-phase process. We enlisted staff, as well as one council member, to review the proposal from Keller. You have all those documents, all that documentation in this packet. It was overwhelmingly decided that we wanted to move forward and bring this proposal to the city council for final award. And that is what you are looking at tonight. What I would like to say is the financial impact. I would like to spend a little bit of time on that. Keller originally submitted their proposal as a two-phase process, is that they would do the feasibility, and the city would prepare a contract and hire a well driller. I had asked them to redo that proposal. I would prefer them to carry the entire contract, and I could manage that project accordingly, instead of going out and having to deal with drillers and looking at cost overruns. I wanted them to carry the whole thing. With that, they came back with a lump sum price in phase two of the proposal. One of the biggest issues is whether it was a bully or non-bully wage project. They gave me two prices for that project. They're both shown in this staff report. I believe it was a feasibility study would be for $307,903 if it is a bully wage projec, project, and $302,758 if it is a non-bully wage project. I've reached out to the Bureau of Labor of Industries to try to resolve that. I reached out probably 10 to 12 days before the holidays, and I have not received word one from them. So, tonight before you is, I would like you to determine whether or not we want to go forward with this. We got a matter of $5,000, whether it's a non-bully wage project versus a bully wage project, both of which are under the proposed budget amount that I brought forward to the Budget Committee. I would like to point out also, 50% of the project costs will be paid by the Oregon Water Resources Department because of our grant that we were awarded. So, really, the total price to the city will be somewhere in the neighborhood of $154,000, less than $154,000. So, tonight, you have two options to award the contract to Keller's Association for, in the amount of $307,903 for a bully wage project, or $302,758 for a non-bully wage project. Or you can reject the proposals at this time. And with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
Okay. Thank you, Lance. And bully is Bureau of Labor Industries, is that right?
Yes, sir.
And I don't do acronyms very well, but I got, got lucky.
If you worked in my shoot, you would know that very well, or anybody in, actually, the city. They're pretty popular.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, somebody.
Yeah, this is Keith. Mr. Mayor, I just want to say, this was also, we talked earlier about completion of the master plan. That was a council goal. This is another item that was a council goal. So, just a reason that we're bringing it forward and been talking about it as well. So, I didn't hear Lance mention that, so I just wanted to mention this was one of the council goals and the reason we've been moving forward on this. So, bye.
All right, thank you, Keith. Questions or thoughts on this from council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, please. Counselor?
Counselor Hook. I just wanted to make a statement that I am always in support of paying people a good wage for the work that is being done, and a bully wage is, is a fair wage, so.
Thank you. Lance? Has anyone given us any idea about our chances of finding a secondary water source?
Well, I have to say, the contractors working with Keller Associates, they are very well renowned, they're renowned here in the state of Oregon. And I could have called Peter, let Peter come on and talk about this more. They're pretty confident that we're going to find it. They work with other municipalities in the area to do the exact same thing. I think they're working on a project now. I have to go back and look at the proposal, but they're working on one now as well for an ASR. I mean, we're confident, but again, until you get down there and you drill the hole and you figure out how much water you can draw, you know, nothing's 100%. You know, we're talking about, you know, it could be 200, 300, 400, 500 feet in the ground. You don't know. There's basalt there. Basalt is fractured. That's where we're going to draw water from, is a fractured basalt. We have it to our southeastern side. The question is whether or not we can get enough, and if it's close enough to make it feasible to take it to our water treatment plant, or have to build something there closer to the site. That's really what we're after, to see what, what it's going to take, and how much we can produce, and whether or not it's feasible to be our secondary water source. But right now, we don't really have a secondary water source. We have the city of Salem. But if they take the same water we do from the river, and theirs gets polluted, they're in the same boat we are. So, that's kind of where we're at. In town of 8,000, we, I, I think we need to find something. And this may or may not be it. I think chances are good that it is it, but we've got to do the work. We've got to do the due diligence and find out whether or not it will work. And unfortunately, it does cost money to do that.
All right, fine, thank you. I appreciate taking.
Peter, do you have anything to add on that? I don't know, Pete, Peter, I see.
Yeah, I'm here. You know, I don't, I don't know if I have anything there, but I think, echo what you said, Lance. You never know until you actually drill. You get in there and find out. But we did the feasibility study for this reason. And this, to, you know, about a secondary source, and this was the recommended path. I, I, it's, it's an exciting project. I think that it offers a lot of positive aspects that will, that could greatly benefit the, the water system for the city of Staten. And so, I, I think this is a, this is a great path forward for the city. You know, that's why it's been recommended, and, and here we are. And, and it's echoed by OWRD in the fact that you have a 50% match grant, that, you know, they think it's a, this is a good direction, not only for the city, but for the state and the region to be going after these types of projects.
Thank you, Peter.
Yeah, sure. Okay. Other thoughts or questions, or are you ready, folks ready to move forward on this one? If you've heard enough, would someone offer a proposal to award that contract or not? And let's move ahead with this.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McDonald?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to award contract to Keller Associates for the contract amount of $307,903 for the bully wage projects.
Second, Counselor Hook seconds.
Okay. A motion and a second. Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Thank you, Counselor Hook. Any more discussion on this? Questions? No? Okay. Alyssa, let's go to the vote, please. Would you poll the council on this one, please?
Sure. Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Counselor Ort? She was muted. I think she moved, said yes, though.
Yes. The spacebar, it's the spacebar.
Thank you, yeah, okay.
Counselor McDonald?
Yes.
Counselor Mullen?
Yes.
Counselor Hook?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Okay, there's, there's most of the business of the evening. Communication from city staff. Keith, anything?
Actually, we do. Keith is going to come in with a update on goal setting. But first, I am going to share my screen with you guys and talk a little bit about the page on our website. Recently, you guys had asked staff to move forward with translation of some of our city documents. And so, we just wanted to show you that we had put a page up on our website. So, I'm going to try to lead you through it here. And we've been, right now, we're posting our council agendas and our city newsletters. So, it's growing, and it also has our temporary public meeting procedures is up there. So, you just go to the document center here, and it's the second thing on the menu.
Yeah, sure. Oh.
And so, these are the agendas and the temporary rules. So, as we expand it, we'll be able to build this page. But what you'll see here is, this is the agenda for tonight's meeting, and then our two meetings that we had in December. And then this tab will show you our newsletters, which right now, we've only done a couple, the November, December, and January, February, that just came out here in the last couple of days. And we just wanted to share it with all of you that it's out there, and with viewers that are watching. We're going to continue building on this and expanding it, and also putting it out on social media that this page is there. And I, we just wanted to let you guys know about it and make sure that you were aware. And so, if you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Counselor Hook. I just wanted to say thank you so much for doing this. That looks amazing, and thank you for showing it to us on how to get there. This is really exciting. So, thanks for all that work.
Thank you. And just, and also something, we've added to the newsletter that's in English. It has a link in there, and it also just has, it's a little blurb saying you can find this in Spanish by going to this page. So, trying to get the word out there and sharing it. And with that, I'm gonna, oh, did you have a question, Mayor? Yeah.
Yes, picky, picky, of course. If I'm a, a Spanish speaker and I have a computer, I obviously know what a PDF is, right? I obviously know what a PDF is, right?
That's, that's the file extension.
Okay, but are we confident that, that our Spanish speakers are computer literate enough to know what all these things like PDFs are?
They should, that, when they click on that, it just opens the file.
Okay.
I'll open it for you here.
Okay. I just worry about using a lot of computers that may not be able to follow.
Yeah, and that, we, that's just the file extension for the type of file it is.
That's fine.
And we have to have it in there, otherwise the file won't open, so.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is Counselor Ort, and I just wanted to echo what Counselor Hook said, and that looks great, thank you for doing that.
It is, it's very nice.
All right, I'm going to stop my screen share because Keith has something next, so.
Thanks for the good work, Alyssa.
Sure, anytime.
All right, so the other thing we have on the agenda that we talked about is with a new council. Congratulations, everybody. We are going, we are working with SSW Consulting, which is Sarah Singer Wilson Consulting. She is the individual that led the retreat that we did last time with our new council to set goals, and we're looking to bring her in again. Probably via Zoom unfortunately this time, but to, with the new council, work on a retreat to look at our council goals and to update those and work with that. So I wanted to give a public notice and to the notice to the council that we're working on that. We're going to be working with Sarah to look for a time, hopefully February, March, April timeframe on a Saturday to facilitate our next goal setting. So just wanted to talk about that and see if there was any questions or comments before we move forward with trying to schedule that time and dates.
Okay, thank you, Keith.
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Patty.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Hey, Keith, is there any opportunity if we, to do these in person at some point later on down the road? If we put off a couple months? Just, I saw a tremendous value actually being in person to discuss this, and I'm sure you did too. Though maybe this is all stuff you already know. Though if that option exists, at least this individual counselor would love to wait until we can do these in person. That's my personal thought.
Yeah, the only reason, I agree with everything you're saying. I mean, that it really was, I think, productive in how it worked last time. I thought Sarah did a really nice job and set nice goals. I thought it was good to have the continuance of someone who's familiar with us, familiar with our council, familiar with what we had happen. The issue is, we'd really like to try to do this as the new council comes on, as we start to set budget priorities. And we're going to be looking to start our budgeting process sooner rather than later. So I'm afraid if we push it off to a timeframe that would allow for in-person, it wouldn't necessarily get us in the timeframe of making sure we're starting to address those, those budget priorities in this upcoming 2122 budget. That's, that, I mean, I'm just sharing what, you know, my thought process was. I'm happy to, you know, have conversations about that. But that's, that's why we were still looking. And we had conversations with Sarah on just how to do that. And, you know, the uncertainty of the timeframe of when we could, could do it in person is another just sort of caveat. We just don't know. And maybe if we schedule something, not making promises, but we schedule something in March, maybe at that point, we could, we could safely do it, and we could just transition to that. I think that would be the preferred, preferred method.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, is there, this is Counselor Hook. Is there any way that, I see that like some of the city staff are in the same room within one another. Is there a way that we could use the community center with the very large extended room, have us really far apart from each other? And even if Sarah can't be there in person, at least having all of us in person, anyone that's comfortable doing so, being in person? Because I agree with Counselor Patty, and I think if we were using masks and being socially distanced in a space that large, and, you know, whatever city staff were comfortable attending in person, you know, nothing negative against anyone who couldn't attend in person or wasn't comfortable doing so. Like, we wouldn't need a reason to why someone wasn't going to attend. But I really do think that there's so much value in, in being in person socially distanced. It's not something that we open to the public any, anyway, from what I remember the last time, so.
It is. No, it would be a public meeting. I can understand why the public wouldn't necessarily want to show up. And we did have it last time where if people wanted to come and watch, they could. So it would be something in that situation where we would have to be considerate of that situation, of making sure that we could allow public if they wanted to, to be there. Since it is a public meeting, since the council will be there as a whole, and we'll have to advertise it as such. So I'm happy to talk to Sarah about ideas. I mean, she's facing this challenge, I know, with all of her clients. So, you know, we can definitely talk and have conversations about, about that, and making sure that if we do some sort of mix of people who can be in person or not, how we make sure that we can have a screen, a visual, you know, tool and the sound that we can hear and see everybody.
Mr. Mayor? I vote, I vote we do it in Costco.
I like that, yeah.
I second that.
We can, we can pick up our toiletries while we're there, right?
Just joking, just joking.
Ouch. Okay, thank you, Keith. And you'll, you'll stay on top of that. Other, other thoughts and questions this evening?
Mr. Mayor? I have our, this graphic summary. Just like to share it. Well, it's hard to see. See that? From our last, it says we're in this together.
True, that's true.
But it also, I see, I remember it saying enhanced community livability. That's just something that's been on my mind a lot lately, so. Looking forward to working on that.
Okay, very nice, thank you, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, if we're in the portion for the, for comments from the council, from the council, are we in that portion now?
Who's the cutie with you?
This is Jolene, she asked to come sit next to me.
Hi, Jolene. Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Counselor.
Um, I just wanted to make sure that it was, it was clear that I, I don't feel like a language barrier has anything to do, or differences in languages has anything to do with computer literacy, and that we shouldn't make those types of assumptions, that that would even be, be a problem unless we're doing that for, for all, all people.
Well, I have trouble knowing what a PDF is. So why would somebody in another, in another language maybe have trouble too? Got to ask those questions, even if the obvious is, or the, of the answers. Go ahead, anything else? Oh, here's one. All of you probably were excited about one of our local residents that wanted one of the, one of the polling places recounted because of voting errors, possible voting errors. We didn't hear anything about that after it was kind of widely advertised. Does anyone know anything about that? Heard about it, I hope.
Just a moment, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry, I wasn't in front of the computer, Alyssa was. I guess to answer the question, I am aware, I had a conversation with Bill Burgess. There was a resident who had selected Staton's precinct for a recount. I think there was a few other precincts as well. I was just notified that there was no change to the totals after the recount. So I can answer that question through that. But I really don't know any more details other than just being notified that there was a recount and it, and it didn't make any impact. And part of that was our levy issue as well, so. But I, my understanding is that there were no votes that were impacted by the recount for Staton, or I think even beyond that, but I'll just speak for Staton.
Thank you, Keith, yeah, I hope not, yeah. Okay, anything else? Well, then, let's give it up for the evening. It's 8:20, a productive evening. Thank you, folks, for being here. Let's do this again in a couple of weeks. Good night, all. Thank you.